Who's been on?
Oh, that's a good.
Yeah, we need to record it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just picked that up and I just texted Chris, so, yep.
Okay.
We can take a look at, yeah, what it had in the property maintenance log and when it was last inspected and see what's going on. If it hadn't gotten like a complaint recently, then someone might not have been out there, so we'll put it on there to get taken care of immediately.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not sure. Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other, any other topics or any other things you want to?
Oh, Steve, could you give me the spelling of your last name, please?
Sure, it's like salty but with the T, T A L T Y.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to bring up to the board?
No, thank you for everything you do.
Well, wonderful, thank you, and thanks for being part of the HOA and all you guys do. You know, it's a sometimes a thankless, but very important job, so thank you for that.
I have another question, if you don't mind.
Um, we're just about to enter the public comments section. Is that a public comment?
It will tail into the hearing's ending, but I'll leave.
Okay, we'll recognize Chuck Norat this time.
Uh, we do have a home in C C E that they're not three feet tall and they're grass, but we're trying to take care of it ourselves, you know, for the HOA, but is there anything, any of the residents just refusing to comply? What means or methods do you guys have to force compliance? Could you literally send someone in to clean up the area and send them a bill?
Yes, well, send them a bill and if they don't pay, then we put a lien on the property.
We're trying not to get to that point, but Jay Griffiths, I'm sure, will be speaking with you, Chris.
Okay.
If we feel exhausted all.
I think she's spoken already.
Yeah, that's okay.
So we have a weed ordinance?
Yes.
Twelve inches from the net?
I think it's eight.
Eight, yes. The one he's referring to Jay has talked to us about because it's been, still has been working with him and with our inspector on it.
So that's, that's grass ordinance or is that weed ordinance? Because it's grass, right?
Grass and weeds, it's the same thing.
Unless it's not conserv-, if it's not conservancy, if it's conservancy, then it's whatever.
I don't believe C C E has conservancy.
Okay.
Do you see the house in here on the left? Is it expanded?
It's, yeah.
Like foreclosure?
They can, they're not occupied.
It takes a long time with the lien and everything, but it takes, it's a very long process to do anything.
The realtor is asking us if it's foreclosure. I don't know how to respond to that, but okay.
Well, why else would be a mess?
Yeah, right. Well, unless you're in Arizona for three weeks and you cut your grass and it was over twelve inches. That problem's been remedied. Okay, uh, section number four, public comments. Are there any other public comments that anybody would like to bring up this evening? Anybody online? Hearing none, let's move on to item number five. The Lake County Sheriff is with us today. Lieutenant Kaiser, anything you want to mention today?
I have nothing to report unless anybody has things for questions.
I have a question. There were threats made after the quick trip vote. There were some calls made to Village Hall, friends and staff. I wanted to find out if there was a report that was open and if there's any investigation was conducted and it's ongoing.
Yeah, the report was made, the investigation is ongoing there, detective right now.
Okay, thank you for that. Let's move on. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda today is the approval of regular board meeting minutes from June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Subject, any non-substantive, substantive, I can't say that word, revision. Hey, Chris, Chris, can I make a comment too?
Please.
Um, so there's no treasures report, Tom, you'll notice, and that's because our bookkeeper was out. So it'll be on the next agenda. So normally, we would have the treasures report on the second meeting of the, of the month. So I just wanted to call that out in case there were questions. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we need a motion, but, okay. I didn't think I need to prompt you guys on that. So I think the first was trustee Harris and second was Rita O'Connor, trustee O'Connor. Um, this is what a voice vote, since it's only one.
Yeah, it's a, it's a roll call.
It's a roll call vote.
Roll call, okay. Um, trustee Harris.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Very good. The motion carries. The meeting minutes are approved. Our next, uh, our next business is a public hearing. Uh, item number seven, a public hearing on Long Grove Affordable Housing Plan, the twenty twenty-five update for the Illinois Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act, three-ten I L C S sixty-seven. Um, so this is a public hearing, so I think officially that public hearing with a, um.
You can just declare it.
I can declare it open. Okay, so let's go ahead and declare that public meeting open. Um, are there any comments from public on the Long Grove Affordable Housing Plan twenty twenty-five update?
Have to give the public notice a week or two before so that people know about this?
Uh, this was published and notice has been available on the website and on the front door.
And I missed that, in the news, yeah.
How many is it, please?
Is this public comment or you want to have trustee discussion? Okay, so there's no, there's no, there's no other public comments. Let's go ahead and close the public meeting or the public hearing. And then let's go to section number eight on the agenda, which is consideration of resolution approving and ratifying the Long Grove Affordable Housing Plan, uh, twenty twenty-five update. And if you want to ask questions, feel free to do so, or perhaps Chris Sparkman or Vic can maybe set this up and give us a little quick update as to what the differences are in the twenty twenty-five plan.
Let Vic take it. Okay, um, this is an act that was, uh, put into law a little over two years ago. And the village was identified as having ten percent or having less than ten percent of affordable housing units. And under that act, that put us into a, uh, a non-exempt category, which required this, the village to develop an affordable housing plan. Uh, that was, uh, developed back in, uh, two thousand and five and approved by the village and it's been in place, uh, since that time. Um, the village has been notified a couple of times that we were still non-exempt. Um, up until twenty twenty-four, there was no requirement to do any kind of update. In twenty twenty-four, however, the General Assembly changed the law and now updates are required if you continue to be non-exempt when they do their, uh, every five-year, uh, update. And because we are still non-exempt, we have a new, uh, plan that's, uh, been developed and presented before you. The, the changes in the plan are really those that reflect changes in facts, i.e., we're in a different timeframe. Uh, changes in law, there are some, and you'll see in the draft plan that there are, uh, updated numbers regarding our number of housing units, the number of affordable units, and our percentage of affordable units. Uh, there have been some changes in law and the, the plan is reflective of that. And then there are some assorted editorial changes that are associated with that. So for the most part, this is a plan that is, uh, carrying forward what we had, uh, approved back in two thousand and five and continues to be on the books. Uh, because of the, uh, modified legal requirements, we do have to approve an updated plan. And, uh, I, I think that the plan before you still is reflective of one of the, the key concerns that had been in place back in two thousand and five and continuing forward. And that is that, um, while affordable housing is certainly something to which the village may be receptive, the market is not. And given the character of the village, particularly our large lot, uh, uh, residential character and just the economies of how the villages lots compare to others, it's highly unlikely that we're going to have any kind of affordable housing, uh, developed here. But, you know, to the extent that somebody finds a way or proposes a way, we will give them a, uh, full and complete hearing. And, uh, that's more or less what the act requires and that's more, more or less what our plan states we will do.
On the document, it says that we do have affordable housing.
Yes.
Where is it?
Beat the heck out of me.
What, how, definitionally, how is that?
Definitionally, it's a matter of calculation. You look at the median, uh, household income. To be affordable, it has to be either eighty percent or sixty percent. Uh, there's different categories of affordability. Eighty percent or sixty percent of the median, uh, income within the Chicago metropolitan areas defined by, uh, um, and that number is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, round, round number. Um, my guess is, and your question earlier about is this, is this in foreclosure? My guess is that a lot of the homes that might be identified as affordable or homes that might have been purchased in foreclosure. Uh, there may be others that have not changed hands in decades and may still be reflective of a lower value than perhaps the market would assign to them just because they have an ad turnover. Uh, there may be scatters, scattering apartments that, uh, qualify. There, there are different numbers for purchase of homes and for rental units. So there might be some apartments that are, uh, in, say, the downtown or second floor. And because we've actually seen an increase in affordable units since two thousand and three, my guess is that some of our senior, uh, housing facilities, um, got picked up as affordable. So I, I don't know, you know, they don't tell us where they are and in fact, they're using gross data from the census and that's how the numbers are found. But, um, that is my guess on where you might find those types of units. But I certainly, and you know this better than just about anybody, if you go to the listings, there's not an affordable unit to be found in Long Grove.
Right, but you're right, the seniors probably have affordable incomes, affordable housing.
Now, if I may, my father's in an assisted living home. Say that's affordable housing?
Yeah.
Not so much.
Yeah, and, you know, part of it also, I, I don't know how those are structured, but my guess is that some of them may be relatively low entry, but relatively high for the, for the care and the service related to it.
Yes.
And so that might, for purposes of the Affordable Housing Act, qualify it as affordable in the unit. But as, as you were saying, Chuck, sure as heck isn't affordable.
No, I get those bills every.
You know, Chuck, and we don't know where, when that data is getting pulled either, I think.
Yeah, this data was from twenty twenty-three, it was based off of the twenty twenty census reported in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so basically back in twenty twenty-ish.
Yeah.
When the data sets getting pulled. So a lot's changed since then, of course. And I was looking to your point, I was, I actually looked up like C L and a couple of them today and like the lowest one I could find was like twenty-five hundred a month. I was like, the lowest, studio, you know, just bare bones, no service, no anything.
Yeah, it's probably more senior living.
Right, right.
You get nothing.
You get nothing, right.
And, and I believe at least Arborea and I think Seal as well try to do a soup to nuts kind of program or at least maybe not up to the, the full care, but at least the, the senior living and, and moderate care, so.
Arborea is now in perspective?
Yes, yeah, that's right, that's right.
That's where my father is right now. They do not have senior living. There's three different levels of assisted living and then there's a memory shift.
Yeah.
And thankfully, I don't know much about.
You forgot about it.
I do, but I mean, my father, God bless him, is ninety-seven and does not need to look to the.
Knock wood, right? It's so important, so important, yeah. Yeah, dad was ninety-eight, same situation, it's all good. Then he died. Okay. Any other questions or any comments on this particular, um, resol-, resolution, I guess? Anybody, I moved this forward. Thank you. Uh, trustee O'Connor?
I'll second.
Trustee Harris for the second of the motion. I plead this is going to be a roll call vote.
Yeah, a roll call vote to approve the resolution and ratify the Long Grove Affordable Housing Plan with the twenty twenty-five update. Um, trustee O'Connor?
Oh, we did that. I had to say higher, no.
Okay, um, trustee Harris?
Hi.
Trustee Borowski?
Hi.
Trustee Jamil?
Hi.
Trustee.
Uh, that passes.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that, that passes, um, which is great. Thank you for that. All right, section nine of the agenda, village engineers report. Mr. Perry is with us tonight, Jeff.
All right, so the village engineers report is in the board package. Just a couple, uh, updates and highlights for tonight. Uh, Village Hall Expansion, still, uh, moving along, uh, putting in flooring and finishing plumbing and doing tile and all sorts of fun interior work. Still, uh, on schedule to move, uh, some staff over there for temporary locations, uh, mid-July, so moving right along. Uh, number two on the engineers report, it was the twenty twenty-five road program. Uh, had some delays on that. Ely Township, at the last minute, they added some roads, so we had to redo all the, uh, contract documents for them. Anyway, uh, the good news is I dot has approved all of that. We, uh, got all that in there and we're going to open the bids July ninth. I think I reported at the last board meeting that, uh, the recommendation and the, uh, contract for approval will be at the July twenty-second, I think is the date, meeting.
Does it include a recommend?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, jumping down, number nine, Arlington Heights Road, just want to give an update. Uh, item C there is, uh, said that Fremont Way is closed, but, uh, Lake Dot informed us that either on Friday or Monday, I don't remember which, they're kind of a blur to me, uh, it is open. So you can now get out of the, uh, nutshell, but you can only turn right on Arlington Heights Road. Um, number ten, the Illinois Route Twenty-two widening project. Uh, I got some information from the state yesterday um, that there seems to be, uh, some motivation to, uh, get that project moving uh, to the tune of they're going to let a advanced tree clearing contract, uh, for this winter. Uh, tentative letting date is September nineteenth for that. Uh, the trees need to be moved, removed in the winter months because of the protected northern long-eared bat. Um, and then the state is then going to proceed with a, uh, temporary grading project so that the utilities can be relocated, uh, in early twenty twenty-six. And then the overall pro-, project, subject to utility relocations, funding, land acquisition permitting, is scheduled to be bid in the fall of twenty twenty-six. So, uh, that was new information yesterday. I know there's a whole lot of other things rattling around in my mind. Um, information that I want to kind of make sure that I dot, tease or cry, say, for example, like the landscape plan and things of that nature, but, uh, we're working through that, but I wanted to provide, uh, the board the update that I got yesterday.
Hey, Chris, Chris, can I make a comment? Um, about that, and it's maybe directed at Vic. Uh, there were, there's an intergovernmental agreement that was never correct. Um, and I tried, Chris Sparkman, I just tried to send it to you, but it, it didn't go through. Um, but it's like a year plus old, so we got, we've got to get some paperwork signed. But they, I don't believe they ever put in their, in that paperwork that, you know, our landscaping plan. So I think that, that's probably something we got to do, you know?
You may re-, you may recall, I think it was probably last fall, we had two different agreements. One was for the Old McHenry Route Twenty-two intersection. And we did approve, uh, an intergovernmental agreement to give them a temporary easement or some of the work that they needed to do with respect to the intersection. They also, at that time, sent us a proposed agreement for the Route Twenty-two widening, which was woefully inadequate. Um, we brought that to their attention and they said, oh, yeah, well, we'll take care of it. Um, but I suppose this is on a similar schedule to Route Twenty-two itself in that this has been on the five-year plan for the last twenty-five years. Um, and so this agreement, um, you know, is kind of tailing along, but I think it's probably worthwhile to, uh, remind I dot of that in light of their intention to start moving forward because I don't know where they intend to do the clearing, but the, one of the fundamental bases of that agreement is that we have conservancy along much of the Route Twenty-two corridor, uh, either, either scenic corridor or conservancy easements. And they're not supposed to go in there to the extent that it's affecting areas that are, uh, so covered by the easements. And they have had a lot of turnover that may not, uh, have learned some of the, uh, historical aspects of this. And before they start obliterating trees, we may want to catch, have them catch up.
So who, who makes that reminder or who sends that reminder?
Jeff, if, if you have the, the person, maybe you might be the initial starting point. And if they need information, you know, certainly I or, or Chris or someone can.
The, the documents were directed at me. Um, I think if we go back, I, I'll try to forward them again and I'll send them to you, Jeff, uh, and Chris Sparkman, because I think that's the latest. It goes back a year. I don't think we've heard from them in over a year.
No, the, the communications that we had in our office were from their eminent domain attorney, but his focus was on that intersection that we did get the deal done. And I do not know whether he had any direct responsibility for the balance of the project, which suggests to me that if he did not, he probably didn't have a lot of incentives to move that forward. But I, I think to the extent that there are engineering folks at I dot that are saying that they're going to get started with some work, they might be the first ones to mention, uh, this too because we sure as shit don't want them to bow ahead and, and, uh, do some stuff that's going to be irreversible.
Plus it's not going to look very good for two and a half, three years. It's like when they come in and try, you know, it's like, looks as if they were good.
Right, right. And then, so Jeff, you're saying that, please, we could see like road construction is twenty-seven?
They might try to start something at the end of twenty-six and immediately shut it down for the winter, so.
Yeah.
Likely.
Okay, thank you. What else is on your report?
Well, um, as Vic was, uh, mentioning, the intersection, the twenty-two and eighty-three was number eleven in the report there. But the phase two, the design engineering of that, uh, was kicked off last week. So in light of what I just heard from I dot yesterday, I think the intersection's going to have to play catch up a little bit. Hopefully, those two can play well together, the two projects, so, uh, more on the timing of that. Part of the Twenty-two widening project. The, you're talking about the traffic signal and the, the path that goes the, the first six hundred feet? Yeah, it's part of the Twenty-two widening project contract. Uh, the Illinois Route Twenty-two widening contract.
Which would be twenty-seven, twenty-seven, yes.
They're going to do that simultaneously?
Yep.
I think the other detail that is left hanging on the Twenty-two project is they at one point had given us a choice of barrier aesthetically, aesthetic choices for the bike path. Um, and we haven't yet about that for years. But that was, that was a loose end that we had.
I think that was closed. It was that.
Ashlar form liner, if I remember right.
The ashlar form liner, uh, concrete. And that was the discussion that, uh, you know, the, or the I dot said, hey, you can have something more, but the village gets to pay for it, or you can have it colored concrete and the village gets to pay for it, or can I anti-graffiti or the village gets to pay for it?
That was the wall you were talking about, the surface.
Village, uh, said, thanks but no thanks.
Yeah, that's all the stuff that I think is in that agreement that's been sent to us, right? So that's why we got to dust it off.
I wasn't sure if we had, we had, um, included that.
Uh, it's been a few moons ago, but, uh, yeah, we did.
The wall, so again, the wall or the, you're talking about the past surface?
Well, there's a barrier between the shoulder and the bike path.
Right.
And.
Oh, so you're not talking about the retaining walls, you're talking about like the knee wall, if you will?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there were still, still open.
I remember that being an action item for the village. But to Bill's point, let's dust it off.
Okay, that's fair. What else is on your report?
I think they're supposed to do like a run iron or something over the carpet.
I remember fencing, like a parapet fence on top of the retaining walls. We talked about like a four-foot fence, so.
So we had to pull it out of the archives to figure out what we said.
Yeah, we'll, we'll refresh our memories on everything and come back with an update next spring. Just the last thing, um, under miscellaneous, uh, there's, uh, funds in the village budget for the Archer bio swales and the drainage, so we're moving forward for that to get that, uh, constructed this fall.
That's when we're going to get all our rain.
Yeah, we could use some.
It'd be good for the, uh, the grass to grow in there then.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Anything else, sir?
If there's any questions, sorry.
Any questions for, uh, engineer Perry, anybody? Okay, um, village president, trustee reports. President Jacob, anything that you want to bring up this evening? Um, just, Chris was looking at some facilitators, uh, for our strategy workshop, so I'll let him tell, uh, tell us more about it under his report, but, um, that's all I got. Okay, very good, thank you. I have nothing to report. Trustee Harris?
Nothing.
Nothing to report. Trustee Jamil? Trustee O'Connor? Trustee O'Reilly is missing. Trustee Tanucci is missing. Um, village managers report?
Yeah, so as Bill alluded to, I have been seeking out some facilitators to conduct a strategic planning workshop that we all would like to have. Um, I have talked to two different ones and I expect proposals from at least one of them. The other one was more of an internal staffing kind of, um, facilitator. This person does specifically strategic planning workshops, village boards and cities. So I expect a proposal by the end of the week and I will bring that to the board at the next meeting for consideration.
It includes dates or potential dates?
We can, my goal is the summer. We'd have to figure out some weekend, uh, some Saturdays or something that would work for the, everyone and plan that out. Uh, but I can give a more fulsome report at the next board meeting on that.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, one more thing. I have, um, we had a plan commission meeting last week for the former Jay's Camp property for Lake Shore K-nine, which was previously referred, um, by the village board to the plan commission. So I have planner Karen Stonehouse on the line. I thought she could just spend one minute to give the board an update on how that went.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, yeah, um, the village board heard a, a concept presentation on Lake Shore K-nine back in May of twenty twenty-four. And, um, the, the applicants are proposing a, a multi-service K-nine retreat. And that would include, um, a retail shop and dog daycare and overnight night care, uh, aquatic therapy, grooming, training, and a private dog park. And I think everybody is aware, um, this is a site, it's eight-point-three acres. It's just north of, uh, Illinois Twenty-two and along the east side of Old McHenry. Um, and, uh, you know, it's the old Jay's camp, as I think Chris mentioned, which was there from nineteen seventy-four to twenty eighteen. And there are some decaying structures still on the property that would be removed as part of this project. Um, so when the P C Z B A met last Tuesday, they considered a couple of things. First of all, zoning text amendments, because this is not a land use that is in our zoning ordinance. So we would, we would create a definition for, um, you know, for a dog boarding, training and kennel, kennel facility. And then allow that as a special use, um, as part of a P U D in R-two, with R-two as the underlying, underlying zoning. Um, the zoning, uh, text amendment would also provide the village the authority to modify, uh, some requirements that, that really are specific to this property, but make it almost unusable. And, uh, those, because it's a triangle and it contains a, a, a big wetland on the north half of it. Um, so, so they would require, um, modification of some setbacks and scenic corridor easements potentially. Um, and then, uh, they, the P C Z B A also considered a special use permit for a. they, the PCZBA also considered a special use permit for a preliminary PUD for the property. And they voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend approval of these items. And the commission also added a condition that the applicant provide a screening and sound mitigation plan for the village review. So they're working on that now. And you can expect to see this item before you in July, at one of your meetings in July, we think. And then the applicant will be returning in the coming months to seek final PUD approvals.
If I might add one other point, apropos the text amendment that Karen was referencing, although it's been identified for the R-two district, it also, in the recommended version, has some pretty limited applicability that my guess is will have only one site that could qualify, which happens to be the one that Camp K-9 is, or not, this is what, Lake Shore, Lake Shore K-9 is pursuing. So this is unlikely to be replicated elsewhere. There was a public hearing before the PCZBA? I don't know how widespread the comment was.
Just the neighbor, the neighboring property owner, the farm there, he was just interested in what was going on there.
They're not a direction. They didn't know about it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And they're okay with it?
Okay, thanks, Karen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I do want, I, I think there is no executive session this evening. So before we adjourn, I want to go back to my report. And I do want to report that on my latest drive back from Arizona, after seventeen hundred and sixty-one miles of perfect happiness, my cat again barfed on Diamond Lake Road as soon as we turned the corner. That's like four times after seventeen hundred hours.
Sort of like the old magic sign on the highway. You knew, you knew how far you were away from home when you got to that sign. You know where you are when your cat decides to write its little cookie.
For the life of us, we cannot figure it out. The same cat within a mile of the house after two days of confinement in the car or the truck. I, just makes no sense. But anyway, there you have it. So with that, there's no further business to discuss this evening. Would anybody like to move to adjourn? Trustee Jamil, motion to adjourn. Trustee Harris seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any, thank you, everybody. Bill, it's all yours, sir.
Yeah, no, thanks, Chris. Meeting adjourned. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
That wasn't very shocking.
So funny. I mean, as activities.